All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November 12th, 2025 Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly meeting both in person and virtually, and we're glad that you've joined us here tonight. During public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and a member of our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to comment to your public comment. We will start with members of the public who are joining us here in council chambers with us tonight, then move over to those joining us remotely. We'll have two public comment periods, one towards the beginning of the agenda, one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session, and we do ask that you comment to under three minutes. With that, thank you again for joining us, and we will now begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and moment of silence.
... United States, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can begin with our monthly roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld. Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Manager's here, assistant's here, chief's here, solicitor's here, you have a quorum, sir. Thank you, and Mr. Strunfeld has excused absence tonight. He has something else to tell you to attend to. So with that, we will begin with Section 3 of tonight's agenda, which is our first round of public comment. So again, anybody who missed our introduction moments ago, members joining us on Zoom, please raise your hand digitally. And then, members in the room tonight, if you make your way up to the podium, we ask that you sign in on the sign-in sheet that's provided on the podium, asking for your name and address for the purpose of our minutes. And then, when you begin your comments, if you could just start with your name and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough.
Hello, my name is Shayna Pratt. I just have a feedback from... I just have feedback from something that I experienced. I love what you guys do. I love that we have First Friday. I'm really happy that you guys have now put some people in place directing traffic. However, I was trying to get into my job from the Collegeville end. It took me 25 minutes to get from Lover's Lane to Star Street. And then I was stopped, and the guy who was directing traffic was letting somebody across the street, and then there were pedestrians like half a block away in the parking lot over Holy Ghost, and he waited for them to cross the street. So just to note that that flow was not going so well. That's it.
Thanks, Shayna.
Good evening. David Lutzker, resident Morgan Street and president of the Phoenixville Green Team. I want to address a few items regarding the Toll Brothers development at Hundred School Lane. I think you received some feedback from the organization, the Phoenixville Area Friends of Open Space. So we've been working pretty collaboratively with the Planning Commission and with the Toll Brothers representatives pretty much all along. And I believe that some of the items have been addressed. For example, the stormwater basins, those retention basins, one of them is already marked as will be vegetated. Sounds great. I'm not sure why the first one isn't. At the least, whatever's planted there could include or be completely native pollinators, and then you've got bees, and then you've got worms, and you've got all the good stuff for biodiversity, and probably can be recognized as such, and use that as positive marking. People like that. We've also talked about the tiny forest, and that would be in the northwest corner, not part of the lot, that's the section that's will be dedicated to the borough. And we hope that a true tiny forest with a little bit of research can be planted there and maintained. Street trees, we've talked about, and there's nothing wrong with more street trees. It's all good. It benefits not just the environment, but the residents as well directly with shade. And next item is solar panels and readiness and ability to put on solar panels. We don't expect Toll Brothers to put on solar panels, but we would at least be able to have them marketed as ready for solar panels. People want solar energy. It's really cheap, and it's only getting cheaper. So that readiness, I think, would be a big selling point, so I urge you to include that. One thing that was not mentioned, mentioned in our email, is EV chargers. I'm pretty sure we don't have an ordinance requiring EV chargers, but I would like to encourage that some of the public spaces be dedicated to EV chargers and to make it as easy as possible. Again, this is, people want this. That make it as easy as possible for people to have charging in the garage. So that's something that's doable with the right, you know, electrical hookup. People want it, and I hope it will help to sell to new residents and also be in line with what the community is looking for. We're hoping that Borough Council can... Well, I know today is an up and down vote, and I don't know if there's room for approval to proceed with caveats, hoping to see some of these things that would be more in line with the values and the comprehensive plan that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I. My name is Dana Waldman. I am here on behalf of Phoenixville Area Friends of Open Space and also on the board of Phoenixville Green Team. And I would like to second what David just said. And I'm also here on behalf of the hundreds of residents who've been following this Hundred School Lane property for years now. Many of us kind of still hoping that all of this engagement and advocacy has amounted to something. And I'll be honest, it's been up and down. I think it's been encouraging to see some changes be implemented, and we appreciate some of the efforts that have been made. But it's also been disheartening, I think, to keep hearing at certain meetings, you know, it's out of our jurisdiction, or it's in someone else's hands, or it's, you know, being pushed to the next, you know, committee or something like that. That requiring stronger environmental protection seems to be an item that is easy to be handed off. So my question is kind of, and maybe it's that I don't know how this works, but whose responsibility is it? You know, Phoenixville has this very beautiful and long 122-page comprehensive plan that lays out a gorgeous vision for a sustainable, thriving, livable town, and, you know, one that protects clean air, clean water, and grows responsibly and sustainably and supports wildlife. And it's not just an aspirational document, it's in its own words, a policy document. So that means that, you know, the borough has already decided that these are our shared priorities. So I think asking a developer to comply with that plan isn't like overstepping. I think it's simply holding them and ourselves accountable to the community standards that Phoenixville itself adopted. So, yeah, I think it's, once Toll Brothers has finished building and they've moved on, you know, they won't be here, but the people who live here, who drink the water, breathe the air, walk the streets, you know, we're the ones that will be living with the long-term impact. So, you know, if we're not willing to apply these sustainability principles now, then like when will we? And I guess I'm asking, as elected representatives of this community, to make sure that, you know, we do everything that we can to ensure that this development and every development moving forward upholds Phoenixville's own adopted commitments to being a sustainability leader. You know, whatever that looks like, whether it's creating new ordinances or sending back to Planning Commission just to get, you know, these final things that feel like they're more in line with what we believe in and what we stand for here. Because, you know, otherwise, the comprehensive plan is just words on paper, and I think we all want to believe it's more than just that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dana. Any members on Zoom looking to make comment in our first round of public comment tonight? Okay. Seeing no one on Zoom and no one else at the podium, we'll close the first round of public comment. We do have another round later in the evening, as well as public comment sessions during some of the action items tonight. Prior to moving on to Section 4 of tonight's agenda, just one note from prior to tonight's meeting. Prior to tonight's meeting, we had an executive session to discuss the following items: A matter of attorney-client privilege discussion related to the 500 block of Bridge Street. And the second item was a matter of personnel related to the Police Department. Again, those were two items discussed in the executive session prior to tonight's meeting. With that, we'll move on to Section 4 of tonight's agenda, which is presentations. I don't believe we have anything for tonight, which takes us to Section 5, which is our consent agenda. Any items in tonight's consent agenda that any members of council are looking to make edits to or to pull out to the normal agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening.
Second. Much my Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion, Mr. Kirchner?
Only question, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to point out, under Roman numeral V, item D1, we're acting on a motion to waive late fees and penalties on utility bills for people who have been impacted by the federal government shutdown. I know the government's reopening, but what are sewer trash bills? We're due October 20th, right in the middle of all that, and we do have a few federal employees who live in the community. So hopefully, this will help them out, allay a few of their fears. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Seeing no other comment, all those in favor opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Our first item, or our next item, is communications and council participation. Any updates or comments from council tonight on any topics? Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all for those of you joining us here today in the room and those of you who are joining us virtually. Just a couple of items I want to highlight from last month. We did have our citizen advocacy run. Of course, citizen advocacy is an extraordinary organization in our community, celebrating over 40 years of helping ensure that citizens in our community are matched with partners to ensure that they can live extraordinary and dignified lives in our community. So highly encourage you to find out more. They will have the run again next October, but it's a great 5K and 10K that we have right through the community. Our Phoenixville bed races took place. They always take place on the first Saturday in November. Just a fun and crazy way to support people in our community. Again, making sure that everyone in our community has a safe bed to sleep in, and that supports Ann's Heart and Good Samaritan Services. And you can actually watch beds racing down the side of Reeves Park. Very exciting, and congratulations to Iron Cross Fitness, who are this year's winners. The 100 Women of Phoenixville had their winter meeting. They'll meet again in the February timeframe. For those who are interested in finding out more about them, 100 of women of Phoenixville brings together at least 100 women, and they all contribute $100, and in one evening, give away at least $10,000 to different charities and nonprofits within our community. And so just a great way to socialize, but also to help contribute to all of our extraordinary nonprofits. Also, a very special thank you to St. Mary's Franciscan Shelter. They had their barbecue event last Saturday. That is to support St. Mary's Shelter, which is on the north side of Phoenixville, which specifically houses families. We want to thank our Girl Scout troop, which meets at St. John's Lutheran. They actually visit us right before this meeting. If any of you are up watching us, remember you are supposed to go home to bed soon. So thank you, though, for coming to visit us today here in the council chambers. On the 15th, which is this coming Saturday, we'll have our Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce Gala. For those who are attending, we hope that you enjoy your time. I believe there may still be tickets. You can check it out on the Phoenixville Regional Chamber of Commerce website. The tree lighting, of course, will take place on December 5th. This Saturday after Thanksgiving will be Burn Off the Bird, our annual turkey trot, which takes off from the rec center, and that's part of the Phoenixville J.C.'s Foundation. And then the Christmas spectacular put on by Feet First Dance Studio will take place at the Colonial Theater on the 6th and 7th of December. Of course, I hope everyone has a very safe and happy holiday, and thank you all for being part of this extraordinary community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brings us to Section 8 of tonight's agenda, appointments. We don't have any appointments on the agenda tonight. They weren't in our consent agenda. We routinely have openings on our various boards, committees, and commissions, so we do ask any members of the public who are looking to put their valuable skills to use in service of their community to reach out to their council people or staff. We always have an opening for whatever your skill set is, and our community can't run without the 100 or so volunteers to take part on our various boards and committees. With that, we'll move on to Section 9 of tonight's agenda, which is new business, which starts off with our presentation of the 2026 Enterprise Funds and General Fund draft budgets. Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Borough Council and Mayor Rischler, members of the public. Tonight, we present the 2026 draft budget, which is comprised of our four enterprise funds, which are parking, water, wastewater, and sanitation, and of course, the general fund. Beginning in June each year, staff has and continues to collaborate and develop a budget that addresses the services the borough provides to its businesses and residents. We strive to align our financial resources in order to concentrate on our residents' quality of life while supporting and implementing the priorities set forth by Borough Council. We then assess the various challenges and opportunities that we face. At present, the budgeted expenses in the general fund exceed the projected revenues. The physical impact of continued rising inflation, escalating costs across all sectors, the impact of tariffs are instrumental to the increased expenses shown in this draft budget. As a reminder, approximately 53% of the general fund expenditures are dedicated to emergency services. The balance of those expenses are distributed amongst Public Works, IT and Communication, Facilities, Codes and Planning, Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Legislative, Administrative, Human Resources, and Finance. As I said, rising inflation and interest rates, supply chain delays, workforce competition, tariffs, and a slowing of the economy negatively impact the ability of the borough to meet or exceed the demands upon it. As demands on our resources escalate, we must thoughtfully and deliberately grow to meet them while remaining fiscally responsible. The borough budgets and forecasts conservatively to maintain the superb level of services delivered to our residents and our businesses. This draft budget does that and reflects prudent and fiscally sound investments to continue delivering all of our borough's programs and services safely, effectively, and efficiently. Staff continuously analyzes challenging, changing and challenging circumstances in the economy as they impact our ability to deliver services. Although much remains out of our control, I believe we have a good handle on what we can control. Sound financial analysis is the core of our budget development efforts, which puts us in a position to weather storms and take advantage of opportunities that emerge. This draft budget reflects investment in staffing and programs that reflect community needs while supporting Borough Council's priorities. We've worked collaboratively in an effort to stay on a responsible course so that we stabilize our finances through conservatively sound fiscal management and ensure greater confidence among our employees and residents. We would like to thank Ms. Dugan and her Finance Committee and Borough Council for their support and direction during the preparation of this budget. I would like to also thank our Finance Director Monica Kozelubinski, Supervisor Peggy Nimchek, Assistant Borough Manager Kelly Getzfried, HR Director Deana Donato, and my Executive Assistant Jennifer Logan for their assistance in this budget process. And finally, we want to acknowledge all of our department heads and our superintendents for their commitment and contributions in developing this draft budget. Lastly, this is a draft budget with several final adjustments still to be made. As you know, we continue our internal work as we present additional recommendations to the Finance Committee, which is in two weeks. As Borough Council knows, historically, these final adjustments favorably close the distance between revenue and expenses, and I expect that to be no different as we move to budget adoption at the December council meeting. So with that, I think I can control this from here. I'll go through the budget. We start with our enterprise funds. Which one do I use here? There we go. So in our parking fund, the way we process, we identify the things that we are looking for, and then we show how we get there. So in the parking fund, we're not asking for any personnel requests, but we do have two capital requests. One is the parking lot at 419 High Street. We're looking to do renovations to that lot with lighting, new meters, repaving it, restriping it, and that cost is about $65,000. And then we're also looking at doing the same thing at the 155 Paradise Street, which is the lot across the street from the Fire Department. As some of you are aware, most council is aware, that's not only an extension parking lot for the Fire Department, but at a point certain down the road, when the French Creek Trail is completed and the Schuylkill River Trail just across the creek, that's going to become a parking lot that would be considered a trailhead. So we'll have EV charging stations there. We'll have lighting there, and we'll have the parking. Okay, that didn't work. It's down. I've got a sensitive mouse here, folks. So the parking revenue for 2026, we're projecting $1,327,300, and we're looking at expenditures of about $1,144,308, with a net positive of $182,992. Fund balance of $500. And we propose those two projects of using $134, which at the end of the year, we're projecting a remaining fund balance of $436,511. And attention, we are looking to put back in place a superintendent position. We went a couple of years without that. It put a bit of a strain on the management side of things because we had one person that was doing two jobs. That's not a reflection of the person. It's a reflection of it's a lot of work. And we determined that we do need to bring back that superintendent. The other thing is that we have to replace the air conditioner system for the lunch and locker rooms in there. So those two costs, one is $43,527, and the other is $142,500. So our revenue expectations are $3,018,000, with a expenditure of $2,861,000, giving us a net positive of $156,878. We have a fund balance, a little light on the fund balance with only $392 for that operation. And our proposed use, because the AC unit is a capital, the $43,527 comes out of fund balance, whereas the personnel side is built into the budget itself. That'll give us a remaining fund balance of $348,000. Again, it's a little light for the operations there. The way we get to where we're looking to improve there is we're raising the rates from $121. They're $116 this year, and we are adding in, as we have in water and sewer, a $7.50 per quarter infrastructure fee. There we go. Our water fund, this fund tracks the interest and principal payments made on the 2022 self-liquidating bond. This is the debt service side of things. The original bond was for $692,000 plus. As of December 31st this year, we expect to have a principal balance of $247,700. And the bond will mature in 2027. So the debt service for '26 will be $151,359. If you do the math, you can see we're getting close to, in 2027, we'll have that paid off. Water fund, we need to replace two raw water pumps, the $265,000. And we have a very antiquated electrical feed system coming down to Water Street down there. And we're estimating that's going to run about $1,600,000 to redo that. It's a lot of, I won't say it's knobs and tubes, but it's darn near like it. That's that old. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of water pipes over top of electrical panels and the like. And so our goal is to clear that up. So our capital request is $1,865,000. In distribution, we also have to replace the Jones Street service line, and then we'll eliminate a 12-inch service line between Nut Road and Pennsylvania Avenue. Most of that has already been removed as it went down... What's the, is it Mason? Down Mason from Nut Road to about where the Luxor project is at. In fact, it's not called Luxor anymore, but that project there, that's already been removed and taken out of service. This would take out the rest of that. And then, so our total capital is $2,045,000. We have no personnel request for water this year. So our revenues, we're projecting $7,993,000. Our expenditure, $7,236,000. We should see a net positive of $757,497. Our fund balance is $2,006,000. We're proposing $2,004,000. That leaves us in not good shape with the fund balance at $615,000, but with the projection of $757,000, that'll bring us, hopefully, at the end of next year, back up into the over the $1 million mark for fund balance. And that's how we manage to get our capital projects. We are not raising the rates. We're not recommending raising the rates for 2026. It will remain at $10.10 per thousand. Wastewater debt service, we have an original bond of $2,798,000. Current balance is $1,000,000. That bond is also due to mature in 2027. We have a payment this year, 2026, of $611,000, and that'll leave the remaining for the payoff in 2027. We have a capital project of an ultraviolet system disinfection. That's a $700,000 cost, personnel request. So our projected revenues, $4.8 billion. Our expenditures are $4,911,000. We have projecting a net positive of $727,685,000. We have a fund balance of $896,741,000. Our proposed fund balance of $700,000 will bring us down to $196,000, but with the projection of income over expenses, that should get our fund balance back up where we need to be for wastewater. We do not have any recommendation to raise rates in 2026 for wastewater, so that will remain at $0.07,000. Pension, we have a balance of $17 million for the municipal employees. And then we have a balance in our police fund of $23 million. In 2025, earlier this year, we approved moving the employees that are in the Fire Department from the municipal employee's pension plan into a firefighter pension plan. So that account has not yet been set up. We're still working with SEI and PFM to get those accounts established, but they will be established within the next couple of weeks, and then the monies will transfer appropriately. We do have to make up funding. We get state funding for the municipal... We do have to make up funding. We get state funding for the municipal employees pension plan. We're required by the state code to put in 754,352 in 2025. We'll get state funding to 479,928. The employees contribute 2% of their wages. So the borough makes up the difference to the general fund of 274,424 for 2025. Similarly, the scenario is, is the same with the police. The MMO requirement for them is 88,858. State funding is 386,609. The, the police contract does not require a contribution to their pension plan. As such, the borough has to make up the difference from the general fund, and that will be 422,249. Our general fund debt service, we have a, a bond on the, this building here of 6,958. The GEO bond will be, as of December 31st, the principal balance on this GEO bond will be 5,391. And that bond is due to mature in November of 2037. We also have a debt service from the general fund for 2026. I'm sorry, the expected transfer is 535,289 for that, for that particular bond. Then we also have the, a general obligation bond of 14,305. That's helped us build the recreation center in 2022 and the fire station in 2022. That bond is stated to mature in November 2050. As of December of this year, the principal balance of the bond will be 12,855,000. I can't see what that bottom line, oh, there it is. So we have to transfer direct debt service fund from recreation and fire for 2026 will be 701,236. We don't have any liquid fuels capital requests at this point in time. That's atypical. We will however, be putting together a list of road projects for 2026. And as that comes forward, we'll run that through the finance committee. And all of council will be aware of what roads will be doing for 2026. We do get revenue from the state, 469,552. We have expenditures of, expected expenditures of 344,790. That give us a positive 124. So our balance to do those road projects in 2026 will be 663,958. Our fire department fund, our revenue, it's, it's, we use the word revenue, but really, it's, it's really a transfer from general fund to the fire department side of the house. 2,618,109. We have a expenditures of 2,709,717. So we're, we're negative 91,608. So the millage that we have projected for, for the fire department will be 2.55 mills. The recreation department, similar situation. We, we pay from the general fund, most of the revenue. There is revenue that comes from the, the different program that we have. But our revenue is a little, a little on the short side of 1,668. Our expenditures are estimated to be 1,720, with a negative of 52,000. We will be raising the billings there from 1.2, 1.43. I think it's at 1.41 right now. Then our general fund, we have five capital requests under the, the recreation department. Typically, we, we pull capital types of funding from the, from our, from our fund balance. But in this case, we have a set aside for, specifically for recreation. And these projects, the electric handicap door, the basketball hoop, electric crank to replace park benches, and the MDM preserve project in the Reeves Park Ball Field repairs, will pull the funds from the PCIP program. And then the police have a server upgrade and a car license plate reader. That will come from fund balance. So you could see the total of 152 requests, 92 of that comes from fund balance, and 60 of that comes from the PCIP. We are, at this point in time in the budget, the, the departments have asked for a codes field inspector at a cost of 98,500. And the police have asked for an admin assistant, a cost of 90,500. Total cost to the budget of 189,000. That's what's been asked for. Those are not in the budget at this point in time. It'll be a topic of discussion, I think, at these finance committee meeting in two weeks. So our revenue for the general fund, a projection of 2026 is 19,992,971, with expenditures projected to be 21,207,000, with a negative of 1.24 million, 1,214,000. That basically pushes our, our millage up at this point in time to 5.84 for general, 1.43 for rec, 2.55 for fire, at a total of 9.82. In a few minutes, we'll have a, you'll decide whether you want to move forward with a, an ordinance for the tax. We do this every year. It's a high number, of course. I think the total at this point in time, we're at about a 15% difference between our income and our revenues. But we also have, oops, mouse again. We also have, as I said in my starting statements, we still don't have our property insurance rates, personal and property insurance rates, our workers' comp rates, our health insurance rates. And the county has not provided us the assessed valuation. We need all of that information, and those are big ticket items. It does move the meter pretty significantly when they, when they do come in. We also are cognizant, though, that as it relates to the, to the assessed valuation, because of a Supreme Court decision and then a negotiated agreement with Tower Health, we will not realize about $24 million in taxes coming from, $24 million of assessed valuation in taxes from the hospital. That represents about $250,000 from our bottom line. So what I said about, you know, the assessed valuation coming in, because this is just recently, it's going to reflect that higher number, and we're going to have to adjust that before we can finalize everything. But hopefully, we'll have that in, within the next day or two. Usually comes in around the 10th, 11th, or 12th of November. It didn't come in yet, and so we're hoping that it'll be by the time we get to your committee. So globally, this is our total draft budget. With the general fund and the enterprise funds, our, our working budget is 36,540,658 for 2026. And that's where we're at. We still got work to do. We're required to post this, if you authorize the advertisement, we're required to post this by Borough Code prior to enacting. We leave it open to the public for at least 10 days. Depending on where the motions go tonight, we hope to be able to put this out within the next couple of days. And then we also are hoping that you'll approve the, the ordinance for the, the, the scheduling and advertising of the tax ordinance at the rates that we've shown here. We're ever hopeful. By the time we get to the December 9th meeting, all of these adjustments have been made. We've worked it through the finance committee in two weeks. And we come back and we'll be able to lower that number. I don't know that we can get to zero. That's always the nirvana that we try to get to. But it will be lower than, well below that, that double-digit number that I spoke about a few minutes ago. So if there's any questions, Mr. President, from council or the mayor, or?
You don't get to ask.
Well, you can. Yes.
It's always a very good presentation our budget where we're at, where we've been. So any questions from council on items tonight for the budget presentation? And again, the, the ordinance that we will be considering for advertising and adopting will be the not to exceed number in terms of a millage adjustment. That's, that's the ceiling that we have to publicly post prior to receiving all the information that actually makes the decision, you know, helps make the decision. Mr. Kirchner.
Mr. President, if I may, the amount shown up there for new personnel, just to clarify, that does include benefits as well.
Healthcare, everything.
Yes.
It's all bundled in.
And from, from what I understand, that amount is something like $40,000 a year, which includes borough share of social security, workers' comp, health insurance.
It can get that high for a full family. If the person comes in and they're single, it'd be less than that. But we have to estimate that there'll be a full family.
I have a question. We announced, I guess, a couple of months ago that we had reached a comprehensive agreement with, I guess, four years with our, with the, the, one of the unions. Yeah, and it was four years, I believe. And can you, Gene, you can summarize the percentage increases for each of those years?
The, the percent increase, it is a four-year. It was five and a half for the first year, five and a half for the second, I think four, and four for three and four, which is consistent within the region.
Right, and also recognizes, you know, current inflation rates and so forth. So, but that is, to a certain extent, impacting the, the nature of the budget.
That, that's in this, in the numbers that I provided you tonight, those numbers are in there.
Right, so, I mean, that's part of why we're at the, the 5, 5.4, I guess.
Any other questions from council on tonight's budget presentation? Seeing none, our next item is a motion to authorize the advertisement of our 2026 draft budget.
Oh, sorry.
Stugan got the motion. We'll give the second to Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 7-0. And lastly, under new business, we have the motion to schedule an advertising ordinance adopting the 2026 tax levy.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion to adopt, or motion to advertise an ordinance adopting the 2026 tax levy?
Again, for clarification, this is an amount not to exceed 9.82 mills.
As, as we have the, as long as I've been here, we advertise a high number, it comes down.
Yes.
This is our not to exceed number for this advertised budget.
That's the ceiling, not the floor.
Yep.
We often get a December miracle. Not always guaranteed, but we get it.
Fingers crossed.
And I would just say for point to the public, I know we went through this really quickly. It was really comprehensive. Want to thank staff. Monica amazes me every year. But if you're ever interested in how, like, the, the nitty-gritty of this, our finance meetings, the Ms. Stugan chairs, we get in the nitty-gritty, and we do talk through a lot of this. So it seems like maybe we just kind of rolled through it, and it was a pretty presentation. But there's a lot of conversation in the finance committee, usually starting in like July, August, and, and going through. So certainly welcome everybody to join that.
Seeing no other comment, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 7-0. That concludes our new business. Moving on, we have no public hearings tonight. Our next item up tonight is a, under resolutions and ordinances, we need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the submission by the borough of a local share account statewide grant application for the Square at Bridge and Main Project.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions on the LSA grant application? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Diving into reports out of committees, boards, and commissions, our first item tonight is coming from Historic and Architectural Review Board, Ms. Stugan.
Well, I'm going to start this with, I'll make a motion to deny the certificate of appropriateness for reservations, the renovations and additions at 184 Bridge Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stugan, second by Mr. Moore, as a motion to deny. Do we have the applicant here tonight? Okay. And then, any, I believe there's much discussion on this topic.
There's a lot. I'd really appreciate if they would come up and we could discuss it a little bit more.
You want to make your way to the podium, just introduce yourself.
I'm Christopher Prada, the owner of 184 Bridge Street Main Stay Hotel.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys.
And then, Ms. Stugan or Mr. Crack, in terms of walking through this project, believe we have some visuals for, we're doing?
We can, I just got to get, I got to get to it.
Well, I can give a little bit of an opener. I'm just, this is the, the project for the, make the, the Main Stay Hotel into a larger entity. And also, they want to, you know, add an extra floor and do some, some changes to the, the, what it looks like. And since this is on our historical, the Historical Architectural Review Board looks at things that make sure it actually conforms with what we're looking for, for it to fit into the town and not stand out. And that's something that I think there might have been some misunderstanding with. And I also feel that this is something that probably should have seen planning first because it's kind of like we're, we're deciding on something that doesn't, isn't even really approved yet. So there's a lot of details here that we haven't even looked at. So.
And Chris, did you want to give us some background for your project?
Basically, we're looking to put a rooftop for the guest estate, the mainstay, number one, on that parking lot next door. It's a small little parking lot. Really, the street shuts down five to six whatever months a year. So that parking lot in our busiest times is pretty much eliminated for parking. So we were going to make additional suites in that parking lot area going up four stories, detached up there. We're going to have an elevator that goes all the way up to the fourth floor, each floor, and stuff like that. When they have the park next door renovated, people can sit on the deck. They get overlooked there. There's going to be some balconies also on each room facing Main Street. So people can have a, you know, come out and enjoy the weather, enjoy the festivities, stuff like that. But that's pretty much in a nutshell.
One of my biggest concerns is the color that we're addressing here, going into the, the gray. And it just does not, and when I first asked, you know, what's going on here, I was just surprised that you were saying you wanted it to stand out. And that's the last thing we want to happen down there.
I didn't say I wanted it to stand out.
Well, you wanted to move on, to make it unique and everything. And this, this color just does not, you know, it's just not appropriate for the way it looks down there. And I've got so many questions that are related more to planning. And this isn't even, we're not even there yet for that. Like, I'm wondering, there's a, a restaurant in the basement that you cannot, if you're going to make changes to the building, I think you should probably make it a little more ADA-compliantable because you have to take stairs to even get to that restaurant down there.
Correct.
And if, I feel like it's already, it's grandfathered in, I guess. But as soon as you're making changes to this building, I think the first thing you have to do is address those kinds of concerns too. So that concerns me as well. There, see, these are things that are not hard. That's why I feel like they should have gone to planning first.
Well, I just, I want to jump in here. This application is for the facade. And approval or denial, there is no determination, no evaluation of the proposed changes as far as land development and zoning goes. So any decision that we would make here this evening would certainly be subject to our planning commission subdivisions, zoning, land development. And obviously, HARB, when they evaluate an application, they're looking at the aesthetic from a total package, right? Because balance is part of what they're looking at and how it fits into the community. And if this design changes through the land development process, a new application or an application for an amendment to any Harb decision would have to come through as well.
So why would we make the recommendation that this is okay when we're not even sure it's gonna vaguely look like this? And I'm just, the order of operations here just seems off.
Yeah, and I'd like to, if I could chime in, since I'm the representative of planning commission, when I saw this also show up, I was like, we haven't seen this. And I guess this is not on you. What the the order of decision making, do do we need to adjust one or the other of our ordinances, either the SALDO or the Harb ordinance? Or provide direction to our director of planning to make a call as to we can't proceed with a Harb evaluation when it's clear that this project will have to go through SALDO? So I'm, we're, and I, we encountered this issue with the project across the street on top of Molly's and I seem to recall that we also encountered this chicken and egg issue with a couple of the iterations on Bluebird. So. And I thought maybe we had found a way to to finesse that, I mean, clearly not, so. Is, do we not have the authority if somebody submits a Harb application to say to them premature?
Well, we can certainly look at it. I I think part of the complication is that not all applications that go to Harb have to go through the subdivision and land development process. And, you know, both entities want to know what's going on with the other. So it certainly is, I think you put it appropriately, a chicken and the egg scenario. I I think best practice, although it's not required, is to file land development application, probably have one planning commission meeting so that you have a little bit closer of a sense of what the building's gonna look like and file a Harb application while your land development process is ongoing. At this point in time, though, there's no requirement for that. So we cannot deny this application on that basis.
Question her, Ms. Dugan, were there any other concerns coming out of the Harb discussions about the facade specifically that you think would be relevant to, sure?
Yeah, sorry, we did talk about the facade and actually on the way out the door, one of the presenters had said, would my opinion be different if the brick was red? And I'm like, I was like, yeah, probably, it would be, it would be a better look, but, you know, there's a lot more. There's a lot more to look at and I just feel like it's very difficult to decide whether it's appropriate, what I don't even, this, it's like imaginary for right now, because we don't know if it's actually gonna look like this. So it's like, oh, well, maybe if this one goes through, we'll do it that way. So that's why this is just so hard for me to support something that hasn't even been to planning.
We, you did, in your response to the Barry Isaac evaluation of the project. You responded to some of their recommendations versus not recommendations, particularly the coloration of the brick. And, you know, they said, you know, paint of the brick is not recommended and, you know, you are proposing a gray. You know, there's lots of buildings that kind of look like that this now, but not in our downtown. And that's why we have a Harb. And so I I definitely found that, and I appreciate you provided reasons as to, you know, why restoring the current brick facade versus, you know, painting it and going with something new is what you would prefer to do, but I I'm really concerned about that, just that that aspect of it alone.
And talking about the painting?
The the painting.
That discussed already, we're not doing the painting, we're putting all brand new brick up.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, there is no painting, it's all brand new brick going up.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch that from the response. So you will be.
All brand new brick going up, yes, continuous, no painting at all.
That wasn't in our most recent package that we.
Yeah.
So we might, you may have submitted something past the cutoff.
Okay, yes, that's.
So.
I had a quick question about the facade too, so on the Bridge Street elevation, there's a door there that looks, and I think that was mentioned in the review letter too, about specifying the door, or I don't know what that is, all the way to the left, I don't know if you could, and it looks like there's just like lines on the, on the actual like rendering, I mean, the blue, the drawing, black and white drawing, says Bridge Street elevation. There. Yeah. So all the way to the left there where the parking lot would be, yeah, right there. Is that a commercial space, is that the main entrance?
That's where it ministers, the electric transformers at.
Okay. So that would be some type of screening that goes there, or so that's not a door?
That, no, that is not a door, that, there will be a a gate locked to get into the transformer, anybody needs to work on that. That's all that is gonna be right there.
So the main entrance to the, to the hotel, will it be that doorway that we're looking at there in the center of the drawing?
No, on the opposite side going down on the other side of the building.
Okay, so then that's just a.
Exit only.
It's an exit only?
Yes.
So that screening is for existing utility install, that's existing already installed.
Yes, it's there, the utility's right there, we're just gonna put up a metal door and screen just to make sure nobody can go in there.
Were there any concerns about the windows, the window styles, the lighting or the railing that's proposed here and how well that adheres to the Harb?
We, they went, they had all the material here, they did everything, they all seen it on the Harb board, so that, all that is all talked about and they were okay with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My humble opinion, this looks like something that belongs in a suburban office park, not in a downtown historical district. You know, when, and the original mainstay was built in the eighties before we had the Historical Architectural Review Board. And when that came about, the thinking was that it would preserve some kind of historical Victorian era character with buildings going forward, as we've seen, that hasn't quite played out. But it. You're you're doing away with parking and I understand you said there are a lot of weekends out of the year where you just can't use that parking space because the road is closed, but one, where are guests of the hotel going to park? And two, where do you have a a drop off for like, for taxis or Lyft or whatever? People checking into the hotel? They, where do they park, where do they put their car, is they take their bag out and go in? I mean, every hotel I can think of in every city has a place where you can drive up to the front door and drop stuff off. Is is that here? Where where is that? And and also parking, where where are guests going to park?
Glad you asked that question. When the street shuts down, where does our parking go for our clients? We have a parking lot, can't use.
How about when the street isn't shut down?
No, I know, but our busiest times for downtown Phoenixville is the times that the season is plentiful when people want to come down more. We don't have no parking pretty much sixty five percent of the time at the end of the day. When it is opened, we have parking here, but for the most part, we only have like seven cars parking in there. So we don't have it anyway and they find it, we use the senior center, we're signing up a mutual contract, I'm gonna be taking over their parking lot. Should be getting that any day, they have sixty parking spots. We're gonna maintain man control, do all the senior centers, we do a lot of funding with them too, you know, we do a lot of fundraising, we're gonna be doing for them also. So they're gonna give us the parking lot behind there, we're gonna manage it, with a gate operated or a man operated on the thing. Now, when the street is shut down, people pull up on the other side of Prospect and we're gonna have valet service. Take all the stuff and go back in there. You know, because like I said, I've been part of Phoenixville for about eighteen years. I think when I, people want to come, from what I've seen, they want to come down to downtown Phoenixville, not stay in Oaks, go back, trip, go driving, because they want to come down here and drink, they want to enjoy themselves, they come and drink. This is the only place to stay. We made the place beautiful inside, clean, healthy, we want to revitalize everything, we want somebody to have a nice time to come down here and stay and shop and do everything. So when I propose this, I would think, and we really don't, usually seven spots is really not a lot when we have thirty rooms. Plus, when it closes down, I felt it was more of a, it really, we were losing it anyway, so why, and then on busy weekends, the rooms are smaller, we want to make better quality rooms for somebody to come down here also. To bring them downtown, to stay downtown, to spend downtown, shop downtown, that's what we're trying to do.
And I just want to be clear.
Well, I just, I, I realize my questions were, are beyond the scope of the Harb application, but I appreciate the information, thank you.
Yeah, and and just, so everybody's on the same page, we are here to discuss the facade material, the fourth floor facade, facade material, the columns, the matte black light sconces, the new windows with the vertical grill patterns, the sliding doors for the balconies and the cornices around the roof lines.
So question in in that vein, would Harb be concerned at all with kind of this open terrace, open rooftop business and any of the concerns around that outside of railings and sconces and casements?
Yeah, I'm, I I'm not sure what concerns you mean, as they, Harb should review it for its aesthetic character meeting our historic district guidelines. Our historic district guidelines are on our website, on our Harb page. There's general design guidelines, there's storefront guidelines, there's specific historic window guidelines, I don't believe applies in for this building. You know, our design guidelines do suggest traditional brick and discourage painting over previously unpainted masonry, that sounds like that's not a problem. But. You know, those concerns, the aesthetic character, but as far as, you know, whether a roof deck should be on the building is not a hard role.
Okay, so it wouldn't be something where it would be prohibited because it's not present in other areas within the historic section of the borough or anything like that, nothing that would prohibit that? A- as a, as a general concept, not just the aesthetic application of it, but.
If there was evidence supporting what you just suggested, that could be something that they could consider. But. Again, from an aesthetic perspective.
Gotcha, thank you.
Chris, the the most recent response letter that we had from from Hoffman was October thirty. Was there communication since then about, and that that's what I'm referencing when I said the the information in front of us that we were trying to base the decision off of included that it didn't mention replacing brick.
Yes. And so obviously that's. After hours, it was passed the the time cut. So if that mattered, but yeah, there was, at the end of the day, we said we're gonna refurbish, not refurbish, we're gonna put up brand new brick.
And that's obviously a big sticking point tonight, so.
A hundred percent, we made it clear the last time.
Yeah.
I stood up here and told them, yes, we are gonna change, we're gonna make the whole brand new brick, not paint.
And then, so I feel like, yeah. If we had more information, would it be more advisable to come back with that updated information so that we're able to make a decision based on the most up to date communication? Because I don't want to put you through the wringer if there's concessions or agreements that that we're just not aware of since we have deadlines for publishing.
No, I I I thought the only thing we were gonna redo the whole brick and that was it.
Okay, that that was the only change, okay.
That was the only change, it's the one thing with the brick they were talking about. And we said that at the meeting that we would do it and everybody voted on that, they understood.
Okay.
If I may, again, within the realm of aesthetics and it may be a solicitor that the the Harb aesthetics don't address this particular thing, but I'm I'm interested, looking at, you know, if you could go to slide eight. And which shows the current facade, general facade, which I guess is some kind of, it looks like old school siding. And then the, your new facade. What mostly caught my eye was looking at some of our previous imagery, if you go to slide twelve, there's and you see on the Phoenix, you see like these panels, which appear to be like a composite, which is a common design and construction facade exterior facing technique and technology and use today. Is that what most of, if we're looking again at slide nine, is that what you envision using, like panels and 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 like flat large squares which are 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 not?
It's like cement composite.
Cement composite, so they will not look, that won't look like brick, that'll be some kind of flat.
Flat, yes.
Flat, flat panels subdivided in four panels.
Correct, correct.
We don't have any in our standards for Harb rules around the use of those types of.
I'm not sure that's correct.
I mean, because I'm wondering whether, to Mr. Kirchner's comment, it it's right, it does look like a, at least that portion of the facade and the top floor of the, on the Bridge Street elevation. Is it dramatically different? Particularly the the Main Street elevation, the facing the square, is a dramatically different look. And, you know, to, in terms of the texture and the look and feel to the rest of our rest of our Harb area, for instance, the construction of the Phoenix, they did a dramatic effort to meld at least the Bridge Street facade to mimic Roehouse, you know, the the existing existing street facade, I mean, if you look around the rest of that side, all the sides of the rest of that building, yeah, they're composite panels, that, you know, the the period, the the, the rest of the building that of the of those those two apartment structures, you know, they they don't look like brick construction. So I'm I'm reluctant, even at this stage, to, and I don't know whether, Ms. Dugan, was there any discussion about the these panels on the, in 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 Harb? Because I'm actually reluctant to approve it because I think that's too much of a contrast and I have no vision for what.
Can I make a, can I make a quick suggestion here, can I suggest that we have a brief recess so I can speak to the applicant?
Okay. What do you need?
I'll make a motion to recess.
Second.
Discussion. Close in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And we we, I I always hope that something could be done with Mainstay, so thank you very much for for proceeding and making this investment. So if you could just help us work out a little bit more to make sure that we can keep the character what we're looking for.
Absolutely, I want to, like I said, I'd like to do everything to show you guys what I'm gonna do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Point of order, Mr. President, we do, there is a motion on the floor.
Yes, please.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
I'd like to withdraw my motion, if that's okay with the secondor.
I agree.
Motion withdrawn. Motion withdrawn. Thank you.
Anything else out of Harb tonight, Ms. Dugan?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Very good. Next, we'll move to planning commission with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll defer to the solicitor. We have him, uh, they're here to review the uh, initially approved, deny the preliminary final subdivision land development plan for the development locally known as kindergarten center. And before I make the formal um, motion, I'll ask for the solicitor to explain it and take us through the discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, I see the applicant's representatives are here this evening. I'll invite them to the podium. Um, and and while they come to the podium, I will give a brief background. Uh, the applicant this evening is Tolmit Atlantic LP Company Inc. This application concerns two contiguous parcels of land located at one hundred School Lane and forty one Second Avenue, together consisting of approximately fifteen point three acres. The one hundred School Lane property is currently improved with the former kindergarten center and forty one Second Avenue is currently improved with industrial structures. The applicant is the equitable owner of these properties. Uh, the applicant proposes the consolidation of the site, the demolition of the structures and the development of the property with ninety three dwellings, seventy three single family townhomes and twenty single family twin dwellings along uh, Second Avenue slash School Lane. Uh, there will be internal paved streets, um, and additional uh, improvements uh, from a pedestrian standpoint, uh, the development includes an eight foot wide concrete sidewalk along the site's frontage, uh, a twelve foot wide paved trail from School Lane to the rear of the property, um, as well as the offsite installation of a five foot concrete sidewalk on Second Avenue from the uh, edge of the site to the borough's shared uh, boundary. There is much more, um, and I will turn it over to uh, the applicant to give further details.
Thank you, Mr. Denlinger. Um, good evening. I'm Allison Zaro from Riley Riper Holland and Callagreco. I'm here on behalf of Toll this evening. Um, with me tonight are Max Bustos from Toll Brothers, Jeff Madden, our civil engineer, Justin Barnett, our landscape architect, and Greg Richardson uh, from Traffic Planning and Design, who is the traffic engineer for the project. Uh, we spent some time, as the green team even mentioned, with your planning commission, um, going through this project and updating things. We did receive a unanimous recommendation um, of recommending approval at the October ninth meeting. Um, I don't know if we have the rendering. I'm happy to pull that up just to give you, Scott sort of ran through a couple of the details, but I'm happy to just give you a little bit of of an overview of what it looks like. Um, and then we're here to answer any questions you have. I don't know if that's easy to pull up, but it just makes it sound, put it in context, I can explain where these trails and sidewalk connections are in particular. Sorry. Thank you. So, um, looking at the plan, um, first of all, uh, and as Mr. Denlinger mentioned, there are two actually two properties involved in this, although everybody commonly refers to it as kindergarten center. Um, on the left part of the plan is what was historically the kindergarten center currently owned by the Phoenixville School District. Um, and that would be consolidated with a second lot, which is the right side of the right side of the plan, um, which abuts the borough's wastewater treatment plant, which is has historically been used and it's currently used for a variety of industrial uses. These properties would be consolidated and the existing buildings on them demolished. Um, we would also, we are also proposing environmental remediation as part of this project. Um, that's currently going through the Act Two approval process right now, and that would be remediated to appropriate Act Two standards under um, Pennsylvania's laws. Uh, there are three access points proposed um, from the existing frontage um, on Second Avenue and School Lane. Um, all, all three of those would provide access to the site. Um, all of the internal roads in the property are proposed to be private. And then there are two bookends on either end of the property on the left side of the plan. Um, you will see an approximately one point four four or five acre um, tract that would be offered for dedication to the borough and be um, available as public open space. We are proposing a twelve foot wide trail um, that would connect from School Lane through the site to the back of the property on that left side. Um, along where you can also see, there's also a connection to Washington Avenue. So that would be a five foot sidewalk to Washington Avenue that would connect to the twelve foot wide trail and that trail is being extended to the back of the site um, with the idea that future connection may be possible offsite. Um, as Mr. Denlinger mentioned, we are also proposing an eight foot wide sidewalk, concrete sidewalk along the frontage. There are um, regular five foot sidewalks throughout the internal street network and then um, sort to the right of the plan is a separate lot that is a little over one point five acres that is offered to the borough for municipal use. This particular property would be graded and we're showing a uh, curb cut connection where road access can be provided um, to the property with for future borough use. Um, we are also proposing a connection, a crosswalk across Second Avenue at that particular entrance on the right side of the plan and that would connect to a five foot wide concrete sidewalk that would be constructed and extended down um, to the borough line with Skookel Township. Um, other uh, items that are involved in this that we are proposing, we're proposing some additional contributions for future connections and sidewalks at Second Avenue and Manavon Street on the frontage. Um, and we are also offering a contribution to the borough um, for use in connection with the municipal parcel for whatever future use the borough may decide to do there. So I'm happy to answer. I guess the other thing I should mention, Mr. Denlinger had mentioned the um, the particular uh, dwelling units. So we are proposing twins along the frontage of Second Avenue and um, those are intended to be two story from the frontage to blend in with the streetscape. The um, more dense buildings and the taller buildings are to the rear of the site. Um, and we do have a streetscape rendering that we had provided in the beginning, um, which I think perhaps council has seen in our package, but and you don't have to go fish for it, but I just thought I'd mention it. Um, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Before uh, we turn it over to council questions, I just want to touch on a couple of things. And briefly talk about some of the waivers that are requested. There are, of course, I did them by letters. Six waivers requested. One is for a radii adjustment of some of the uh, private internal streets. Um, one is for certain uh, street grades for certain internal streets. One is for certain driveway grades. One is to allow Belgium block curbing in internal to the site, um, as opposed to concrete curbing. One was related to the steep slopes that were created during the construction of the kindergarten center, uh, that will be uh, adjusted or impacted, I guess I should say, uh, which were manmade slopes. And the other uh, relates to uh, the removal of trees. In addition, uh, oh, I lost my thought. Oh, the uh, Ms. Zaro mentioned that the uh, twins along Second Avenue and School Lane uh, will be two stories and that the taller buildings will be uh, interior to the site. Uh, Ms. Zaro, could you just describe the topography of the site a little bit, um, and how that affects the height of the building?
Uh, I think I'm going to defer to Justin Barnett, our planner slash uh, person that knows the most about the architecture. Um, and I, he's the one that worked on the rendering that we provided originally and he can explain how that lays out on the site.
Sure. Good evening. Um, the site, uh, let's see if this works here. The site um, is generally highest along School Lane, Second Avenue and descends to, you know, topographically towards the rail line um, at the top side of the page. Um, the architecture uh, that was designed for the site, um, is what we refer to as a tuck under. It allows you to have um, a two story elevation on the street side and a three story elevation on the alley side. Um, so in working with the topography here, we were able to ensure that the twins have a two story elevation, which is more in line with the um, existing residential homes within the area.
Uh, and having sat through his liaison, um, I'll just kind of elevate that. If, I mean, if you look at it, it's to a certain extent and tell me if I'm not overstating this, but it's kind of like a bowl. Um, and that's part of this, we talked about the waiver, there's some waivers associated with the the street, um, some of the streetscapes and the the roads in terms of their their and and also, uh, but then it goes up to where the rail line is. So it's it's a little bit like a bowl and if there's three story townhouses on the uh, on the rest of the of the of the plot, correct?
Yes, correct.
So the the stuff along, the stuff along Second Avenue is two stories on Second Avenue, but three stories behind.
Yes.
And then everything else is is three stories.
Correct.
And then, um, the other thing that I wanted to, and maybe you can, one of the things I thought was important to share with uh, and particularly there might be some neighbors who are concerned, there there is a significant um, stormwater management challenge with this site and uh, we have some specialized technology that is part of the proposal. If I don't know, you want to speak to it or so forth, but?
Yeah, I'll leave that to our civil engineer, Jeff Madden.
Uh, good evening. Jeff Madden, E S E Consultants, the civil engineer for the project. Um, do you want me to go into a little bit of detail?
Sure.
Existing in the existing conditions, uh, as it stands right now, um, as Justin was saying, from Second Avenue down to the railroad tracks, there's probably, probably thirty five to forty foot of elevation difference uh, just in that small little vicinity. Um, and on the other side of Second Avenue, probably a thousand feet, twelve hundred feet off the page to the bottom. Um, again, would continue to rise up to a certain peak. Uh, from that peak, all the storm water runs down all the existing roads. Uh, there roads were built many, many numerous years ago with limited stormwater collection facilities. So there's only a few uh, inlets that would capture the water at the bottom of those roads before it intersects with Second Avenue. Those inlets only capture ten percent, five percent of the storm water in the larger storms that would flow down to this vicinity. So the remaining water, uh, normally, uh, in, you know, on a on a higher storm frequency day would go and meander through the kindergarten parking lot and then ultimately uh, reach the railroad tracks and ultimately the the Skookel River. On the right hand side, uh, same thing, all these roads would uh, get captured a little bit by the um, inlets, but a majority of the water would cascade across Second Avenue and then again, work its way through the varying um, channels that are on the industrial parcel. So the proposition of this design is to um, intercept, you know, keep the existing uh, infrastructure that's there, but then also at all the inner, at at the uh, uh, intersections of the new proposed roads with Second Avenue is to put trench grates to capture any of the water that would possibly go across the uh, Second Avenue, capture it and then put it underground um, in bypass pipes, which would then bring the water, some of it to the basins for treatment, but then ultimately some of it would just be discharged, just like it is today. So that was one uh, a nuance that we we put onto this design to help treat any of the storm water that was coming to the site uh, and replicate, if not make better um, with this design, any storm water that ultimately uh, goes through the site to the railroad tracks and then ultimately to the Skookel River. So hopefully that touched on what you were looking for.
Um, remind me, the, there's, there's a pump house or is it a pumper?
There's a sanitary sewer pumping station uh, that's in that corner that that would treat all this, all the sanitary sewer that goes through the site uh, would reach this pumping station as the lower, lowest portion of the site and then ultimately get pumped back up to Second Avenue and then into the treatment facility.
It was, it was a, that particular piece of technology was a significant uh, contribution to the to the project. It couldn't be done without without that. So I wanted to make sure that that was pointed out.
True.
And and there was a lot of questions about that by the engineer and by the planning, planning commission about that system.
Questions from council?
I just had a question about the public open space and the municipal space. It looks like on the plan, there's a, there's significant uh, elevation drops in those as well. Is that correct?
Um, we just starting with the right parcel, uh, there is significant drop in the in the middle of the site. Uh, one of the requests from the planning commission and the uh, the borough engineer was to uh, put some fill in this area to help level the area so that if and when there is something that's proposed there, uh, building, what have you, it's already prepped a little bit for uh, some kind of structure that would be there as opposed to just the natural terrain that's there today, which is very, very steep. On the left side of the parcel, um, as was previously discussed, there's a meandering uh, trail through this portion and uh, as part of the ordinance requirement for recreation space, um, the um, middle of this green area uh, is graded at two percent, uh, two or three percent. That way it enables uh, ball play or frisbee, you know, what have you uh, to be to be done in that location. Uh, and again, the the sides of it would then be made up uh, with with steeper terrain just to get down to that flatter area.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as far as the the trail goes, is there a provision for the trail on the northern uh, along the northern boundary of the property, along the railroad track?
Right now, the trail is just a uh, is would stop at this location at the edge of our property. And then if and when the, I think it was discussed, if and when the borough or another applicant
Right.
may continue that trail, but that's as far as we might be able to take it.
Okay, I guess that would be incorporated into what may one day be the Freedom Valley Trail, they're calling it. Okay, I I see positive nods over there, so. And a a real quick question about the twins on Second Avenue, will they be fronting on Second Avenue, facing Second Avenue with parking in the back?
Yeah.
Maybe that's not your purview, but?
That I can discuss that. Uh, but yes, they'll be fronting, if you want to call it that. Their front door will be on Second Avenue and then there would be uh, rear loaded off of the alley in the back for the garage.
And would they, would there be off or on street parking available in front of those? Houses or?
There is, um, there will be two spaces in the actual garage itself, two spaces on the driveway uh, for each unit. Uh, it's it's an eighteen foot wide driveway.
No, but I mean along Second Avenue.
Second Avenue, I don't believe we've
No, no on street parking.
We would just have parking internally.
Okay.
There's spaces throughout the site.
Thank you.
Uh, some of the items that that I know we've uh, sort of negotiated through the process that I'd just like to to mention uh, is that the requirements of of informing future homeowners, the proximity to the railroad, the proximity to the sewer plant. These are important uh, preventive steps in my mind for future complaints. It is important to let the future residents know their, where they are moving into. It is a perfectly charming neighborhood, but it is, you know, it is cited in an area that is light industry, so or has been. So I do appreciate the the incorporation in our action memo of of those items. Um, and then I believe uh, in twenty twenty two, we had the ordinance that required to make ready for E V in the garages and that would apply to a development of this size.
That's correct and
That was brought up earlier, so I just wanted to touch on that briefly.
Yeah, and in fact, in uh, our borough engineer at R B E's most recent review letter, that item is marked as satisfied in comment twenty two.
We have, we have a note on the plans.
And so in in each garage, there would be a, an outlet, uh,
That actually did come up in our review earlier and we did confirm that, so that's correct.
Just wanted to make sure we answered some previous questions on the floor here, so.
I have a couple more questions. So I know it's not on the plan, what's going to happen with the public open space, but I think just maybe that's a question for us and people in the public probably want to know too. So like, how do we envision that being rolled out as public use?
So like anything we do, it would go through our Parks and Rec Committee and determine the best use. As was stated, it is graded to be what's considered to be flat and usable, which allows us to go through the process to determine what's best for the borough. Certainly, the municipal use parcel, since it's immediately next to our sanitary sewer plant, you know, that is probably the natural use for it, but we have not committed ourselves to that. And again, the grading there, there was an iteration that the grading was a little bit more sloped throughout. And with discussions with the developer, they created some flat areas and kind of crunched that more sharply graded area together.
Just want to add, I don't know how long the plan is, but the dedication of these are probably at the tail end of the project. So it'll, it'll be built and then that dedication will occur. I've been having dialogue, we have been having dialogue with Ms. Gibbons on the recreation side. She's well aware of this and has put together a game plan for the purchases that would go in there, what type of equipment, what have you, but we still got plenty of time for that. As well as I've had the same dialogue with the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant. Ideas of what we want to do there when that time comes, a couple of years, year and a half, two years down the road. So we are internalizing what we might want to do there. We're just not.
Not ready to order the top lot yet?
Not yet.
Great. One more question. So I don't know if this came up in any of the reviews. Was there any concerns about guest parking? Because I know that each unit has four spots. But it doesn't look like if you fill your car with, fill your garage with stuff and you park your two cars in the driveway, where do your guests park?
Well, we will make sure there's a provision that says you cannot use your garage for storage, but we do have extra parking on the site. There is, there's not on-street parking on the alleys, but there are extra spots along various portions of the property, along the roads. And there is a parking calculation. In the, in the explanation, Jeff didn't get all the way to all of those numbers, but I can have him give you those specific numbers if you'd like.
And there's no parking on that top road, right? Like, I think that was added.
So that's at one of the alleys, so there would be no parking along there. So there are a couple alleys where we were talking about the twins, for instance, being, you know, the garages being in the back, that's an alley, and then at the top, that's also an alley on the back. So they would not have parking.
Thanksgiving is going to be crowded.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I just, I know you guys have talked about this, but I think parking for guests is going to be a concern. It's going to be tight. I lived in a neighborhood very similar to this.
I've lived there now and, and it's, it's just, I mean, you can, it's not going to be like no parking in front of any of the three-story townhouses. You'll be able to park on the street in front of them. So, so I think probably they're only wide enough for like parking on one side of the street. They won't, you won't be able to park on both sides of the street, but you will be able to park on, on those roads. And that, yeah, we went into it, you know, we have standards in terms of parking calculations. It, the development meets those requirements, so. And they've tried to do as much as they can and I, I, I think you can park along Second Avenue. Yeah, so, I mean. Yeah, so.
Can we do our microphones? Sorry.
Oh, on the twin side, on, of Second Avenue, where the twin homes are, there is going to be street parking there.
Yes.
I thought we mentioned earlier there wasn't.
I think they said there wasn't.
We were at the review to put no parking signs on Second Avenue. That's what my team is telling me, which is why we answered the question that way. But obviously it's a borough road, so it's up to you guys what you want to have on the road.
I did find the parking calculations, there are one hundred and twelve on-street parking spaces internal to this site.
And that would be specific to those marked roads, like you had mentioned, alleys would not allow parking.
That's correct. And in the planning commission's memo, one of the things that we had discussed at the most recent meeting and they recommended is that we actually put up additional no parking signs beyond the ones we had shown on the plan on the alley in the back, and we certainly will comply with that comment.
Will this be in H O A?
Yes.
We're not taking dedication of the roads?
That's correct.
Now, I have one question for clarification. You, you did say that with, with regard to the garages, that residents would not be permitted to use them for storage? They'd have to use them for parking?
We would write that into the H O A declaration. Of course, it's, it would be up to the H O A to enforce that. There would be an enforcement, at least there'd be an enforcement mechanism in there.
Yeah, well, I know.
And not conversion to living space, that kind of thing. I've, I've seen some of that kind of stuff recently too. So we can make sure that that's correctly covered.
Now, my, my, my bet is that an H O A in a development of this size would be pretty vigilant in enforcing rules like that, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kirkner, you may have seen in the resolution that we require that I review and make sure those provisions are in the H O A documents before they're recorded against the property.
I've got a couple of questions. I was wondering if you or someone from your team could speak a little bit to the landscaping and kind of the urban canopy aspects of the project?
Sure, I'll turn that over to Justin.
So, and just to be clear, you're, when you talk about urban canopy, you're talking about the streetscapes. And so the borough does have an ordinance regarding street trees. There is, based on a calculation on how much roadway there is there, you get a defined number of street trees you are required to put in. Typically, the spacing you see here is between thirty-five and fifty feet on center. So it's going to be a pretty tight canopy as the trees grow in, which I think will be beneficial for, you know, where trees are shading certain sides of the pavement.
Sounds great, thank you. A question for, for our people internally. These street trees, will these be considered borough street trees? Or will they be not considered those because of the H O A and the private roads?
No, two things. One is, if I'm correct, you are installing mostly native trees from the list that we provided, and because they're not dedicated streets, they would not be.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, thank you for the clarification. I also had a question. I think there was some conversation, and Mr. Moore, you may have some background here, but some conversations around vegetation, around like stormwater basins?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sure. So there's two main stormwater basins, which Jeff Madden had, you know, shown previously. We are proposing vegetation on the longer linear basin to the north of Alley D. That's a shallower basin, so we're able to add in more trees along with the basin bottom seed mix, which is pretty typical for applications like this. The basin to the left is more, is, is, is more deeper and based on the design of that basin, we'll have inundation periods up to three days where there could be three to four feet of water in there. So on that basin, we elected to do a basin bottom seed mix rather than try and vegetate that with trees just due to the frequent, you know, the long inundation periods there.
That makes sense. Given the long inundation periods there, will there be fencing around that or other ways of?
Yes, there, yeah, I think each basin will have fencing around that.
Okay. And then unrelated, I did have a question about the, kind of the border between Alley C and the municipal area. Is that just going to be tree-lined? Is there going to be a fence there or some other kind of demarcation between the residential area and that municipal area?
I think right now it's just planned to be tree-lined.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Questions on the actual buildings? We, you had mentioned that you would not allow conversion of garage space to, to residential space. Looking at the, the picture here, is there design for rear decks on these properties or these, what is, what is displayed?
There, there will be room for rear decks on the, on the, over the driveways.
Okay. That's, okay.
I did have another question, I'm sorry. Can you walk me through just the, the sidewalking throughout the development, where there will be sidewalks and where there may not be?
Sure, so try and hold this. So from an ordinance requirement, we have to have sidewalk on both sides of all streets. So internally, Road D, which is the long road coming through, will have sidewalk on each side. There is sidewalk on each side of Road A coming across Second Avenue. Sidewalk on both sides of Road B coming across Manavon. And then sidewalk on the one side of Road C opposite the municipal parcel. And on top of that, you do see the sidewalk kind of looping around Road D that does tie back, tie into the trail system.
And no sidewalking on any of the alleys?
No.
Is that a correct assumption? Okay, thank you.
And one of the items, back to the deck question, one of the items we've had with other developments is the, the building of a deck and then trying to convert it to a three-season room and then trying to convert it into living space. I'm not sure that we can speak, that we can prohibit that, but that's one of those items that bothered me in the past, so I ask it tonight.
So one of the things, I, I think where that's come from is we had some issues with past developments that the decks would be outside of the building envelope, which was never our intention. So from the beginning, our zoning officer, Mr. Bulker, had conversations with the developer to make sure that their decks would be within the permitted building envelope. So from the perspective of converting that into a livable space, you know, that would have to comply with our zoning ordinance.
One final question, this is probably for you, Scott, but the municipal access is, will be through a private road? Is that present any, present any type of future problem?
No, we would just make sure that we have an access easement. As you can imagine, there's a number of easements and ancillary agreements that will be a part of this project. Using the Odessa development as an example, there were fifteen agreements that accompanied that development. Any other questions from council? All right, with that, I would turn it over to public comment. So normally, public comment is only before and after the meeting, but as you know, when we have land development applications, we also take public comment at the time of the discussion of the land development matter. Please state your name and address and make your comment.
David Lutzger, Morgan Street, resident, the Green Team. So question about the future of the trees in the northwest corner. What is the plan for them? I don't know if I can get an answer. Yeah.
As part of our landscape application, we did provide an open space management plan. And, you know, not sure if you've read the Borough Arborist Report, but a majority of the woodlands on site are just suppressed by intensive invasive species. So part of our open space management plan is to come in, remove all the invasive species, which will allow the remaining trees in that northwest corner to then, you know, kind of re-establish themselves and, you know, re-vegetate naturally.
Part of the plan to plant those trees?
No, we'll leave those trees as is. The, the existing trees will clean up the invasives. Because right now, essentially, when you walk the site, the tree canopy is just covered with invasive vine species. So right now, they're, you know, being suppressed by that. Removal of those invasive species will allow those trees to get back to better health.
No additional planting?
None proposed within the tree line.
Anyone else here in person for public comment? Seeing none, anyone on the Zoom platform for public comment on this land development application?
Susan, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, hi, I'm Susan DiChirio from four oh three Gay Street. You mentioned that you're planting trees thirty-five to fifty feet apart, center to center. Does that include along Second Avenue? And if it does, it seems to me that that doesn't really, we have many, many street trees that are planted much, much closer together. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the question and comment. Yes, the, the trees along Second Avenue were plant or are proposed to be planted that tightly. This was done in, you know, kind of in communication with the, the Borough Landscape Architect and Planner. I think the, the ordinance allows for fifty-foot, she encouraged, you know, between thirty-five to fifty feet on center. And that's technically done because, you know, when you're placing trees along a street scape like this, there's a lot of underground utilities you have to watch for conflicts for. So in certain areas, we need to get a little tighter to meet the intent of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other public comment from the Zoom platform?
Mr. Denlinger, there's no further hands raised.
Right, with that, I will close public comment and potentially entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to Borough Council approve the, officially approve their preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as the Kindergarten Center.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion by council?
I'll just say this, I think the end result of this project through collaboration and lengthy discussion and meetings is a, a better result than I had hoped for. We had a different vision than this when we, you know, before, before Toll Brothers was involved. I think of, of the of, of the iterations that it could have been, I feel like, you know, we did come to a place that at least fits the neighborhood is less than what was originally proposed and there are some significant borough assets being contributed to the neighborhood. So I do appreciate working with you on this one.
Ms. Dugan?
I just wanted to mention that I don't vote for things like this, but if I were going to, because I would prefer it to be in open space. But if I were going to, I would have voted for this one. I've seen worse. This isn't bad.
Okay.
So that's positive.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a note in reference to some of the concerns expressed by the Green Team about plantings, tiny forests and so forth. I did note that the following conditions are included as part of the action memo, item five. The, we'll be revising the plan to include additional plantings to alley and street areas to the satisfaction of the borough planner. So we have been trying to listen as much as we can to encourage the greening of this, of this property to the extent that it can, and we appreciate, I appreciate that that's done. As far as the, the waivers, most of them, three of them are related to the topography of the site. I actually appreciate that, I don't know why it's never been in Alsao though, but to allow the Belgian block versus concrete. And, you know, other than that, that it seems to be the types of waivers that we have granted to others and are appropriate and not really, you know, exceeding the demands of the, of the operate, of the, of the project. and not really, you know, exceeding the demands of the, of the operate, of the, of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else for council? With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved six to one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate your time this evening and the productive discussion.
Anything else out of planning commission, Mr. Moore?
Uh, no, we do have a, a meeting scheduled for this month, uh, tomorrow evening, uh, starting at six.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Feenchel Regional Planning Committee, Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much to report. Uh, one, Regional Planning Committee member, West Pike Land, on last Tuesday, I think it was, uh, approved their referendum to fund the police department. So they're not disbanding the police department in West Pike Land. And from what I understand, they're increasing their property tax by about a mil, which is doubling of their property tax. So, um, also, I'm sorry, that's West Pike Land. Did I mess, mix up my Pike Lands?
You got it right.
I have Pike Land news here. West Pike Land with Police Department, East Pike Land has, uh, is, uh, um, has an agreement to purchase 70 acres. Miller Farm, that's across 113 from Jaeger's. And the third item is Schuylkill Township. When, when are you going to open up that Wawa? Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Um, a lot of things coming up, and as usual, everything I mentioned here is available on the website and lots more. But I'm going to highlight some things tonight. Uh, the Parents Night Out is, uh, Fridays on November 21st and December 12th from 5:30 to 8:30. Snapology Parent Child Winter Workshop is Saturday, uh, December 6th from 1:00 to 3:00. There is a free Thanksgiving gratitude yoga class at Reeves Band Shell on Thursday, November 27th from 10:00 to 11:00. Yogan Holiday Hand Bows Wednesday, December 3rd from 6:00 to 7:00. The, uh, Fall's, uh, Schools Out Camps, couple of them are Young Ram Brands Art Camp, uh, youth coed sports camps, Snapology Workshop, and Soul and Sky Mini Camps. Youth and family programs, we've got wellness and leadership labs, um, on Saturday, November, Saturdays of November and December, December art classes with Young Ram Brands, um, on Saturday, December 6th to January 21st. The Winter Phoenixville Youth Track and Field on Mondays, December 3rd, December 15th. Skyhawk Youth Volleyball Thursdays, uh, in November and December. Jumpstart Basketball, that's, uh, Saturdays, um, in, starting in November. Indoor Soccer Shots Mondays at the Renaissance Academy. Music in Mind and Mixing DJ Program, that's, um, that's, uh, that started in October and it goes through December. Winter Junior NBA Basketball Academy on Mondays from January to March. The Youth Coed NFL Flag Football Academy on Saturdays at the Renaissance Academy. And then there's a few adult programs. I'd highlight the Feldenkrais Method on Thursdays in November 18th to 25th. Strength and Stability, um, it's from October through the end of November, most to the middle of November. Open Jam at the Phoenixville Rec, Rec Center. It's Saturdays, uh, November 8th and December 6th. And finally, the Indoor Pickleball Clinic with Universal Rackets. That's Tuesdays, November 18th to December 26th.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We'll move to Mr. Carmonito with Tree Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, Tree Advisory Commission met this month. Uh, we are in the process of planting our fall plantings. Uh, we are, eh, planting some volunteer, uh, tree trimming over the winter as trees are dormant and it's a good time to, uh, prune our trees. And, uh, there will be no meeting for December, January, and we will meet, uh, again in February, or they will meet again in February and begin right away planting for the spring plantings. That's all for Tree Commission.
They're looking good. Appreciate it. We'll move to Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
No updates. They did meet tonight. Unfortunately, I missed it because I was with you fine folks for executive session. Um, we do welcome to new members. That was, um, covered in the consent agenda, and we are working on a multicultural holiday celebration.
Thank you. We'll move back to you for personnel and public safety.
Uh, nothing that wasn't in the consent agenda, but thank you for council and staff supporting, um, updating our list as was in the consent agenda.
Move to Mr. Moore with Parks and Recreation Committee.
Nothing in addition of the report.
Thank you. Mr. Carmonito with Policy.
I'm going to jump in here really quick, uh, quickly. Yes. Uh, so the item number two is an ordinance to amend our, uh, right to know provisions to enable us to adopt a policy, which we're permitted to do under the right to know law. However, we need to adopt that ordinance before we can do number one, which is a resolution adopting the policy. Uh, so, uh, I would accept the motion to table the resolution setting forth the policy for responding to right to know law requests submitted to the borough. So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
All right. So where do I start? Go back to one.
Start at number two.
Start at number two. All right. I make a mo-, all right. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to schedule an advertising ordinance amendment to Chapter One Administration and Government.
Second.
Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Uh, last item, Mr. President, is a motion to schedule an advertising ordinance amendment to Chapter 15 Motor Vehicles.
Second.
Motion to second. Any questions on our regularly scheduled update to motor vehicles? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, that's all under policy. Uh, I don't believe we have a meeting in December, so, and the calendar's not out for our next meeting yet, correct?
Correct, but you're meeting tentative.
Oh, November. I'm thinking it's December. Yeah, I'm thinking of something else. All right. Never mind. We're meeting in November. Our next meeting is in two weeks, November.
November 25th.
November 25th. Apologize.
Immediately following finance. Okay. With that, we'll move over to Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability with Mr. Weiss.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, as always, lots going on in this space. I think, uh, one of the more exciting things is you can start to see some of the pieces coming together for the Phoenix Wheel, um, next to the borough here. Um, but other than that, uh, no, uh, action to, uh, report at this time. I do want to say thank you to Mr. Moore for stepping in for me in our last meeting. Uh, I was unavoidably detained and he stepped into chair as the second best Brian on council. It was, uh, it was great. So, uh, really appreciate that, Mr. Moore. Thank you very much. Uh, our next meeting is on the 18th, um, and it'll, uh, directly follow Parks and Recreation. Um, so yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. We'll move to Ms. Dugan with Finance.
Everything for finance has previously been covered.
And our next finance meeting is November 25th, uh, starting at 5:30 PM. And that will be our final budget, hopefully our final budget discussion. Okay. With that, we will move on to the second, final round of public comment. Any members of the public looking to make public comment? Please make your way up to the podium. We do have a sign in sheet where we ask for your name and address for the purpose of the minutes, and that you address council by starting with your name and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough. We also have the opportunity to make public comment via our Zoom platform. So if you want to raise your hand on the Zoom platform digitally, we will then go through that queue, unmute your microphone, announce your name, and you'll be able to make your comments tonight.
No hands raised, Mr. Uhl.
Seeing no one at the podium, we will close the second and final round of public comment, which takes us to the second and final round of communications, council participation for tonight's agenda. Any comments or updates from council tonight? Seeing none. Staff reports are in our packets tonight for manager, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, human relations, uh, human resources, and recreation. Uh, each month we do list at the, on our last page of the agenda, the, all of the upcoming meetings with their dates, times, and they're all taking, uh, and where they take place. And then lastly, uh, we do have our monthly employee service anniversaries for the month of November that we like to highlight each month, uh, celebrating 126 years of combined service to the borough of Phoenixville and our community. Uh, starting off with 27 years, we have Officer Brad, Brad Dobry, who everybody knows as our lead bicycle officer. Uh, we have Sergeant Lance Frost, who has been with us for 25 years. We have Lieutenant Pat Mark, who has been with us for 25 years. David Moore has been in our codes office for 21 years. Kelly Gafford is celebrating 17 years this month. Logan Hartman is with us for three years as a parking officer. Uh, Kyle Stettler has been with Streets for three years as well. David Barron has been in our water treatment plant for two years. Jaden Heck has been with sanitation for two years, and Chaz Hartman has been with parking for, celebrating his one-year anniversary. So we do appreciate our talented staff. Uh, without them, we would not be able to have the community that we are so proud of here. And that, uh, dedication and longevity is important to the resilience of our community. With that, we have no further items on tonight's agenda. What is council's pleasure?
To adjourn.
So moved. Thank you. We will see everybody at the December meeting and our, uh, various upcoming, uh, committees and boards. So have a great night. We'll see you next month.